Okay, we are, I have seven, 7:01. We're going to call this virtual special meeting of May 5th, the Stonington Board of Education to order.
Is Attorney, is Attorney Cheney joining in?
He will join in, yes.
Okay, good.
And second item on the agenda is the comments from citizens relative to items on the agenda. We received one public comment, and that is from Tracy Swain of Pocketuck, Connecticut. To the Board of Education members, you seem not to be surprised that no alleged victim has tried to contact Attorney Cheney, whom you hired for independent investigation. Not either because it's ridiculous to expect that young victims should first know how to contact Ms. Cheney, because it was suggested in the day, and second, that would take the initiative when all along it has been made clear to them that they were not to be believed. First of all, the school website stated this emergency hearing to be held on Thursday, May 7th. Then sometime after nine was changed to Tuesday, while also stating that comments could be submitted by Wednesday. Then the sporing was changed again to correctively state the right day and that submissions would be taken until four today. Either the Keystone cops are in charge, or you are deliberately doing what you can to avoid public comment. The website also states that the public should submit their comments via a school email address or the box outside central office. Do you really think people trust you or Dr. Riley enough to not lose the negative comments? Assuming you have not lost my emails, these are the comments I would be making myself at the lectern if your meeting was held publicly. Why were none of the Board of Ed members made aware of the agreement with Chokis, his leaving and package deal? Why was no one ever discussed the possibility of suspension of any staff members under suspicion of having held back information regarding the issue to the proper authorities? The students' belief or failed in the past by the current staff members, and somehow you managed, you imagine, any of them are going to feel safe to talk to this investigator after the letter in the paper states Attorney Cheney had not heard from anyone wanting to give her information to stated which staff members she had already spoken with. Did the high school secretarial staff give her a list of all the names of students and their date, and their last known contact information that had classed with this teacher from the start date, the last date of contact with students? Did Attorney Cheney not read the past articles in the day paper over who had information regarding this issue that she could have easily found and contacted? As just two examples, there is a retired rotten police detective, a resident and father of past student of the high school, and the past staff member who had already had the integrity to come forward during one of the Board of Education meetings, and who clearly had a lot to say. Was there any reprimand of current staff member whom contacted past staff members after that meeting, other than from our police office? Why, after every single one of you stated that the members of the staff would be available for interview, did the union president Freeman send notice to all staff that once contacted via investigator to contact him, and he would send union counsel to be present? If none of the staff did anything wrong, and as they keep saying, then why would any of them need legal counsel during his independent investigation? I phoned this investigator you hired, Attorney Cheney, left three voicemails to contact me, but as of this minute, she has not phoned. I was calling her on the grounds that a past student asked me to get a feel of her before this student phoned her. She stated in her interview she would be available at all times. You're allowing Mr. Riley access to information during this investigation, as you expect folks to trust you, and you, Madam Chair, when you refer to the investigator, you should not use her first name. That right there tells folks you became too buddy-buddy with her. Take the blinders off. We'll use some of you. Do you really think, after just a few reasons I have listed, that you folks are the ones that should be handling the investigation? Many residents, including myself, think you should have handed it over to the Board of Select Women from the very beginning. Stop getting egg on your face and hand this over to the impartial committee, perhaps the Board of Select Women, so they could get to the bottom of what truly happened. Only then can past students can feel safe with speaking to an investigator, as well as, in Mrs. Simmons' words, "they can feel vindicated at the end." Keep this up, and the State Board of Education might walk in one day and take over, and there will be nothing CAPE can do to stop them. Stop listening and stop funding CAPE with our tax dollars. They are just a lobbyist group exerting undue influence over you. They are not in any way connected to the State Board of Education, and the State Board of Education does enter. The only member of the Board of Education that will remain will be Mrs. Simmons, because she is new and perhaps others who have disagreed with the decisions of the majority. Maybe it's about time some of you look to the state statutes as to your job as Board of Education members. You have control over the whole school system. Stop letting Van Riley run over you all in the steam train he has been on. This is Tracy Swain, Pocketuck resident. That is our one comment from citizen. I'm sorry, I did have a missed call from Ms. Cheney, from Attorney Cheney. She needs an invite, Chris.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to tell you, because I got, I got it too.
Yep, I just entered the link again.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for muting your mics when you're not speaking. It adds less noise and background. And I believe Attorney Cheney is, is on with us. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is discussion and possible direction on internal investigation with Attorney Chris Cheney. I'll start with just giving a little bit of background, reminding where we've come from and where, where we're at now, and then we can figure out where we want to all go forward from, from here. Per engagement letter, we approved that on March 18th, and in that engagement letter, there was a list of questions from February 26th that we would like answered during this investigation. They were the type and frequency of alleged improper conduct by Mr. Chokis, how many students were impacted in the timeframe, whether the school district maintained proper policies and procedures during that timeframe, if said policies and procedures were not followed, what caused any non-compliance, whether the alleged victims reported their concerns into complaints to school staff members, and if not, what caused them not to report them, whether any school climate culture issues contributed to any deficiency in implementing the policies or procedures, and whether school climate culture has improved since the alleged employee misconduct occurred in Stonington Public Schools. So that was the questions we had had from our meeting on February 26th. And the investigation was stated to take a minimum of two months, and that was just before the pandemic hit. So hopefully we can keep within, just expand that timeframe just as only by a little bit. General description of how we would, items that would need to be completed for this investigation. We would need to provide Attorney Cheney with documents shared with the OCA, records released in response to the London Day FOI request, and a reports guidance shared by Shipman &amp; Goodman, Title IX Attorney, and any relevant Title IX bullying harassment complaint filed after 2004. Electronic mail messages between and among key participants, Office of Child Advocate report, which we don't have yet, and final decision of FOI regarding the London Day complaint, and messages, letters, or documents referencing, referenced during interviews. The documents from, that were provided to the OCA and the day, those have all been provided to Attorney Cheney and have been reviewed. Administrators have been interviewed. Coach, golf coach has been interviewed. And now we're still looking to interview past students, students, parents of alleged victims, parent witness. So those are all the items of what we need to go through. Now, the information to contact Attorney Cheney was placed on the Board of Ed website and in the day and the Westerly Sun. It was placed on the forum on March 19th with the contact information and brief summary of the link to the day article. So this way, people who did not subscribe to the day could still be able to read the information necessary in order to contact Attorney Cheney. I have provided contact information to a few former students and parents who have been vocal about the Chokis investigation. One is a current college student. The parents stated they would contact Attorney Cheney once college exams were completed and would pass along the contact information to others. I do believe the timing of the investigation was slowed by the pandemic, but I think as we have adjusted as much as we can to our new normal, I think we are ready to provide additional direction, to include direction reaching out to others whose perhaps their names are in the paper and in social media. We had said from the beginning that this is a fluid process, and Attorney Cheney would meet with us to evaluate progress, as well as any adjustments to the investigation. And I believe that's what this meeting is, is all about, the fluid process, evaluating our progress and making any adjustments to this investigation that we, that we all agree we might need to make. I would also hope that while we provide this direction, perhaps find out from Attorney Cheney what has worked in the past for her, and how we could go about reaching out to a variety of people, and also if it's possible to have a deadline. Human nature, maybe deadline will help for everybody for, and have closure to this investigation, maybe a timeframe. I want to see what people think in regards to that as well. So we'll open this up to the Board members, perhaps as I gave my point of view, all of you could, one at a time, give your point of view, and then we, Attorney Cheney would have an idea of what we were all thinking. We could all have a discussion and then help provide her some new direction. How does that sound to, to people?
I just wonder, Attorney Cheney, if you have been contacted by anyone else. I know I talked to you like a week and a half ago, and you had said that nobody was, was coming forth, and if I knew anyone, to try to send them along the way. And I, I haven't sent anyone, but I have talked to several people. I've talked to undergraduates and to graduates, and I thought, you know, if nobody's coming forward, maybe this just isn't even important to go through with. So I was becoming a little bit cynical about this, and so my concern was really, what did the students feel? Did they feel that this was important for them? And all those that I talked to, and particularly a senior that I spoke to, said, yes, we want you to finish this. And why? Because we want to, we want people to know, and even ourselves to know, that our concerns were real. And, and then one senior who is graduating said, I'd really like this done before I graduate, almost as a graduation gift. Could, could this please be done? So that, that really incentivized me, and I got back to thinking, no, this is something we have to really follow through with. And so my concern was, well, first of all, if you've suddenly got a barrage of people, then maybe we should know that first, and that's a, that's a no. I see. Oh, wait, how come she got muted?
When we're not, when it's not our turn, if we could mute, because then it gives less feedback and allows the conversation to go more fluidly. And perhaps as now we can, if you can just air your questions, and, and so we all kind of have a point of view, rather than, then we can formulate the questions, so maybe Attorney Cheney can hear from all of us, and we can all hear from each other, and see where we might want to all bring this, so we all have a, an idea.
Okay, I guess I just didn't want to ask questions if things had already taken place, but I saw a shake of head.
Sure.
Say this, I think that what Alexis proposed is great. So what I'm going to do is, as each of you speak, I'm going to write down the questions that, that you are asking, so that I make sure that everybody's concerns are covered.
All right. Well, my, my hope is that we can find different strategies to collect data, not just putting it out to a couple of sources, but maybe become in some way more aggressive in collecting the data by going to sources that maybe have been mentioned. The newspaper, you're the investigator, so you should, I will let you figure out that way. I think we need to begin to really collect data, so that at least it justifies a, an apology, which I think that these many children deserve, and I would like those to be validated with, with real data that we have gathered through an investigation. I don't see that now. I see just that we've talked to a lot of the, the administrators, and that I think is unfortunate, because it's really that we want to hear from the children.
Can I talk?
Yep. Oh, wait, let me unmute.
Oh, that's okay. I want to sort of echo what Heidi was saying. I think, in my opinion, I think we need to be, or Attorney Cheney needs to be way more aggressive and reach out and call people. Their names have been in the paper, so they're not, we know who they are. There's been a lot of people who have spoken at our podium, not a lot, but there's been some who have spoken at our Board of Ed meetings, gotten up, said their names, said their address. There's been statements from people, written statements submitted. There's been, you know, like I said, names in the paper, and I would like to see you actually call them and reach out to them.
Thank you, Alisa.
Yep, I'll mute now.
Okay. Who would like to go next?
Hi, everyone. So I've been disappointed so far with, with the progress of the investigation. And as I shared with several Board members, the firm that we, one of the firms that interviewed to become our investigator, reached out to me, and they had some suggestions. So I'm just going to share with you those suggestions, and hopefully they'll be put in the minutes. One of them was to set up and run the confidential hotline in order to encourage victims and witnesses to come forward. Leverage the investigative reporters to work with witnesses they interviewed to convince them to meet with us and tell their stories in a form that will make a difference. Perform interviews of these witnesses and victims, and any other, any others identified as willing and material to the investigation. Conduct outreach by email and US mail to the known and potential witnesses that mentioned, that were mentioned in the press and other media sources. And memorialize these interviews in a written report to be turned into the Board of Ed, or perhaps Attorney Cheney. I just want to say that I know you're doing your best, but it, you know, I'm just going to say, I thought to myself, when my mother runs her yard sale every year, she advertised it, or advertises it more than we did for this investigation. She puts ads in the paper, she puts signs up around town, she goes on Facebook and goes on different forums, and I think we need to take this seriously. We've had so many people come forward, either through the paper or, you know, at meetings, and to just throw a couple of ads in the paper and throw it up on our website is disrespectful to them, quite frankly. So I'm disappointed. These items I just listed, I wish the, either we could have this firm help Attorney Cheney, which they're more than happy to do. I'm sure she doesn't want that. Maybe she does. But they are true investigators. They're trained. That's, they do this. And as I've said, my, my sister's an FBI agent. She is, this is what she does for a living. She, she works with children who have been victims of sexual assault. She's trained to deal with this kind of situation, and she's also a taxpayer in town, and she is extremely disappointed in how we're going about doing this. She says it's actually a joke. So I don't want to be a joke. I want to be part of an organization that takes these things seriously. And so I would ask that, that we all remain open-minded, and that we aggressively pursue this information, because in the end, what we're supposed to do is, is be given data, and evaluate that data, and take that data, and come up with policy. And that's all I'm looking for. I want to know how many kids were actually affected, what teachers knew about it, what the administration knew about it. This is the kind of information that I want to know. Up until this point, it's been very anecdotal. It's what we've been reading about in the paper. And so the reason we hired an investigator was to actually come up with the facts, because that's what we need as Board of, as the Board of Education. We need to know the facts, so we can go forward and do what was, or is appropriate. Now, something happened at Stonington High School, inside those walls of Stonington High School, and it ranges somewhere between some inappropriate behavior, creepy behavior, to perhaps something far worse, because if this teacher was touching kids inappropriately, you know, that's an assault in this day and age. So as Board of Education members, we need to know that. And we're not finding that out by just sticking a couple of ads in the paper and hoping for the best. That's not good enough. That's not good enough. So that's my feelings, and thank you for listening to me.
As well said, Jack.
Sorry, I was still muted. Thank you, Jack.
I really struggle with this.
I'm sorry. And who, Craig, would you like to speak?
Well, I would just say, I think, you know, again, the investigation hasn't been going on for a very long time, and for all we know, I mean, I think it's a little premature to judge it in terms of success or failure. It might have been, it could have been possible that we would have had lots of response initially. We don't know why people didn't respond. So I think really it'd be more productive just to come up with a list of things that we think should happen, because I agree with Jack. We want to be able to say afterwards that it was thorough and complete and accomplished what we wanted. But I don't think we need to be characterizing it before we get further along in the process. I mean, if there's way, things we think we can do to improve it, we should come up with those suggestions and those ideas. Now, that's, that's really, that's really where our, I just, I feel, I just feel strongly that it's wrong to characterize it as not having progressed properly so far. We don't, we're caught between balancing how much time and effort and cost we can afford, and we don't know how people are going to respond till we try to reach out to them. So I think we should, I think we've seen that perhaps we need to do more, because we're not getting any response, but that wasn't known really until we tried it. So I just, I'd just like to approach it from that direction.
Farouk?
I think part of it is that, no matter how we do, you know, we put a sign, or we, we advertise it, or we put it on a website, in the past two months, every other newsworthy or, or anything that was out there, it got passed with the whole COVID-19 issue. I think people's, during these times, worry about their health, worry about their, likely would worry about their, you know, unemployment skyrocket, you know, they can't figure out how to apply for unemployment, let alone read the paper or website. So I'm, I'm, I'm torn in between, like, you know, I don't want to characterize it as a failed attempt on launching an investigation, but I think we should do a little bit more than just, you know, trying to put it in this mass of the media of like unemployment and sickness and death and all that. So there has to be a way, because it's get lost, you know, like it or not, it's going to get lost in the, in the, in the, with the whole pandemic that we have across the globe. But my thought is, you know, if somehow we can get a list of all the people that, talk to reporters, or talk to people on the board, and, and do the attempt of the outreach, and I appreciate your thought, Christine, on waiting for them to call you, but maybe an attempt to outreach is not a bad idea. The outreach might help put some people's mind at ease, and put our mind at ease, and the, and the idea of like, you know, we, we try, you know, we want to try, we really want to try. It's not an attempt to, you know, it gets, we get characterized by many things, and I got very... But we really want to, you know, try to reach out to these people and, and see what to say, and then it's your job to tell us, to find the, the truth, right? But I, I think it, whatever you try other than reaching out, is going to get lost in this mass madness of everything else that's going on in life. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Farouk. I think that Attorney Cheney took our original recommendations, and perhaps were a little soft in, in that request, just being maybe a little naive, thinking these people will want their voice heard, and of course, they'll be there, and then a pandemic hit, and then reality of, of the world hit. So having a more direct and stronger outreach is a, it seems like a common theme that all of us want, and maybe we can hear from Attorney Cheney on some ideas and how she can do that, and get feedback from the Board members to see what they think, if they have other ideas as well. Does that sound okay to everybody right now?
Can I just comment on one thing? I don't think that we, as the Board, necessarily the ones who are characterizing against unsuccessful. It's actually our public and the constituents. If you look at the postings that came after we, after we published Attorney Cheney's letter and comments, the postings that came in from many public, they were very much aware they were not so overwhelmed by the, by the pandemic that they weren't able to respond. And then to have the editorial by the day, these are, the primary reason that we were doing this was really to moderate the distrust that apparently had been expressed, and to invigorate a, a respect back into the community, which had been challenged. So I think that we can judge at this point that, right now, there isn't successes happening. We've been in a state where apparent by talking to many of these students that I did, they want this to happen. They are not so overwhelmed by the, by the flu that they're not still dependent on us to follow through with this. I feel very responsible for making this happen, and I am very upset that we have, we don't have something else to show. And we do not have a very supportive, apparent supportive community that's out there right now. The, the letter we got was a bit extreme, but there are, we have gotten other public responses about this, and so I think that we can say that right now, we are not doing that well with the investigation, and we, and we really need to put our pedal to the metal on this, and, and not sit back and say, well, maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't. We've seen that it isn't. So we really need to have whole new strategies, and I guess that is what I hope Attorney Cheney can tell us, what the whole new strategies are.
Attorney Cheney, do you have some ideas, some thoughts on our comment? Attorney Chinny, do you have some ideas, some thoughts on our comment?
Sure. First, I'll, I'm just going to take your questions in order and then we'll talk about how, where we go from here. First, I want to make this overarching point. The strategy of leaving it to the individuals to contact me was the strategy that I felt I was directed to utilize by you. So I did not feel that I could engage in more aggressive contacting on my own motion until we had this meeting. It is clear that that I am now authorized to do that, and that's what I'm going to do. But up until now, that was, that was not the charge that I had from this board. And it also was certainly not included in the price that I quoted you. So you, you need to understand that what you're asking for now is a much more aggressive approach than what you initially authorized. I am more than happy to do that. I've done that many times. But that wasn't my understanding of what you wanted me to do at the, at the time that I was retained. Have the floodgates been opened? No, they have not. There was one individual who did contact me. She said she called me three times. No, she called me late yesterday. And I did call her back and have not yet heard from her. But anybody who has contacted me, I have gotten back to them. Frankly, there have been more people who have gotten in touch with me. There have been people who have gotten in touch with me to sort of give me character references for Mr. Chokus. And I've told them, well, you're perfectly free to tell me that you know him and so far as you know, he's a good person. But unless you're telling me you, you actually witnessed something he's accused of and it didn't happen, that's really not very helpful to me in terms of what I'm trying to investigate for the board. I will include your comments in my report to the board, but that's not really what I'm here to investigate. I would be happy to reach out to any and all of the people who have spoken to you, come to your board meetings, sent you messages, sent you emails, sent individual board members emails, all of that. I'm perfectly happy to do. That's a, that would, that's going to take the, the investigation in a new direction. I've done that many times when I've had, when I've conducted investigations. That was not what you authorized me to do at the time that you retained me. As far as working with the reporter, I don't think that's a good idea. That's not an independent investigation. That's piggybacking off of his investigation. What you've asked me to do is an independent investigation. If he would, if he reaches out to me and sends me that here's a list of all the people I talked to that you may want to talk to, that's fine. But you're asking, you want an independent investigation. This, the, my purpose, as I understood it, was not to validate or invalidate what he found, but to make findings and bring those findings to you. And so that is, that is what I intended to do. I do think that the COVID thing has been a bit of a problem for the reasons that Mr., I hope I pronounced your name correctly, Mr. Rahab has said. And also for the reason that it has been a distraction to everybody. On the other hand, I was hopeful that after the first couple of weeks of it was over with, with the college kids home, that they would reach out and that simply hasn't happened. Remember, I am not making an assumption about what happened and what didn't happen. You don't want me to do that. That's not what an independent investigator does. I'm going to evaluate the data that I receive, formulate a report and share that with you. But I'm not making any assumptions one way or the other about what occurred. That's not how an independent investigation works. I am more than happy to become more aggressive, as you say, I've, I can start on that. As soon as you get the contact information to me, I will pursue that. I'll make phone calls. I'll send emails. I'll send snail mail. If that's what it takes to get in touch with people. But I cannot force people to speak with me. And that's an important thing for everybody to understand. I'm, there, there, no, these people are not accused of a crime. They're not witnesses to a crime that we know of at this point. If they are, if that evidence comes forward, I'll work with the police department and they'll have to talk to the police department. And then I'll talk to the police department. But I do not have the ability to force anyone to speak with me. So while I can certainly am happy to reach out and say, I really want, my understanding is you have important information that I need to know so that I can make a good, valid report to the board and ultimately to the public about what happened here. But people have to be willing to come forward. People have to be willing to speak to me. And Heidi, just to your point that the students really want this to happen, no, no current student has contacted me. So if there are people that you have spoken with who want their, want their story heard, give me their contact information so that I can reach out to them and contact them and speak with them. And I'm happy to do that with any individual board member that has information, the information that's been made public, the, anybody who spoke at your meetings, anybody who sent even an individual board member emails, which I don't believe that's been provided. I do, I would want to see any and all of that. And I'm happy to shift to a new phase of the investigation tomorrow morning. But as of the, up until now, that was not my understanding of what I was authorized to do.
Are we, are we talking now? Or what?
Go ahead, Heidi. I'm sorry. I was clicking the wrong button, wrong, wrong platform. Thank you.
So we, as a board, our most important job, one of our most important jobs, is to make sure that the students' learning is not compromised in any manner or fashion. It is very apparent that it was compromised. And I don't see why that can't be explored by using some of the information from the day, which has gathered a lot of people. What I need to really understand is, I think you're saying that it is our responsibility to give you contacts. And that confuses me because you're the investigator. So you need to have the strategies to get those contacts. And I don't see why you can't begin by using those people from the day and then, and then, I mean, I went through the day and came up with 14 people, children, who gave their name and there were quotes to them. And then as well, there were parents that said that they actually had made concerns or complaints and that, and they are quoted as well. That seems to me to be a good, a good beginning. Whether when you go and you talk to these people and you, and you deem that they, that their information invalidates what they've said, that's another issue. But at least you're gathering data. And I, I actually did send Alexa a letter with about eight ideas that I had, that I wanted for consideration to at least prove that I, which I think is really important, that we should give these kids at least an apology for the learning that was compromised, which, which I, it was. Now, I don't need to have heads roll or people fired. I just would like to know data that justifies the apology that I think is deserved to a lot of these kids as they said, yeah, I just want to know that what happened was real. And if, if you know, if you know those survivors, some call them victims, but survivors of this kind of situation, particularly adolescents, they are not going to run forward and talk about it. Look what's even happening nationally. We have a woman who is coming forward and what's happened to her. Look what happened to Dr. Ford, just on a bigger scale. So particularly in today's world, women come forward and they are maligned. And young adolescents are a little bit more reluctant. So I guess I was just hoping that you had magic strategies to, that you could approach these kids and get them to respond to you. And I, I felt that particularly as a woman.
Respond to that. I am not going to start from the presumption that what was in the day is true or not true. My job is to make my, my own independent assessment of what has happened. So I am more than happy to reach out to, to, to reach out to anybody who spoke to the day, who, anybody who spoke, anybody who spoke to you. That until tonight was not my understanding of what I was supposed to do. My understanding was that I was supposed to make myself available and it was supposed to be a completely voluntary process. People who wanted to speak to me were supposed to be made aware of my availability and my desire to speak with them. And that was why we put the, what we did on your website and that was why we put what we did in the day. That has not provoked the kind of response that we need in order to get to the bottom of what happened here. So at this point, I think it makes sense for me to reach out myself to people, whether they want to talk to me or not, whether they want to, whether, whether they come forward voluntarily or not. They have come forward voluntarily to you. They have come forward voluntarily to the day. So I can, I can reach out to them without their permission, if you will, or without their consent. But I, and that is what I will do. But again, until tonight, that was not my understanding of what the board wanted me to do. My understanding was that I was to make myself available and that people were supposed to be given an opportunity to come forward voluntarily. And that was, that was what I did up until now.
Can I, can I talk? Jack has a sense. Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah. Can you hear me? I can't. You can hear me? Can you hear me now?
We're all muted, but yes, we can all hear you.
All right. So look, you know, maybe it's just because I run a small business and this is my mindset. But, you know, you hire somebody because you want their expertise. So what I heard when we hired her was she was going to start, 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 start by putting a few ads in the paper and something on the website and then take it from there. The thing is, is that when I talked to my three teenage daughters about it, and they range from 16 to 22, they all have said, you got to be kidding me, Dad. Who thought of that idea? Do you think any of us read the New London Day or go on stonington.org website? I mean, come on. So what I'm saying is, I just don't have a lot of confidence in this attorney at this point in time. And I really think that she needs help. And we need to maybe look at, of maybe subbing part of this out to a different organization because I have no confidence right now, especially after listening to the attorney kind of explain, you know, her point of view. So that's just my feeling. And I will now defer to or allow unmute. So.
Okay, so I'll, I'll go next. I, maybe I wasn't clear, we weren't clear, I misunderstood what you were saying when we were talking at the very first meeting. But my impression was, I think sort of what Jack said is, you were going to use every means possible to talk to people who were involved. And whether that was reaching out to them directly or putting something up on the website or hoping they come to you. But I honestly don't think that now saying, well, you, we, I was, I wasn't tasked with that, that, that task. I hate that phrase, is a little disingenuous. Because from what I remember, you were going to do, and I'll go back and read the notes because maybe I wasn't paying that much attention. But I was under the impression that, that the website, the newspaper article was one method you were going to use to find these students and reach out to them. And I asked you specifically during the interview if you would reach out, if you were planning on reaching out to the reporter. And I said, not so much to get his take on it, but he's done a lot of research. I have over a thousand emails from a FOI thing that he did, that he, that he, that he had. And you could just go through a thousand pages of emails to read them. I can certainly send that to you if I still have it. I didn't get through all a thousand of them.
I have those. And I
But that you would get all the documents from, from the board and from, you know, the offices. And I certainly, I'm going to go with Heidi, it's not our responsibility to get, find the contact information and give it to you. As you kept saying, you're the investigator, we're on the board. And I don't think it's up to the administration. I don't think it's up to Anna or any of us to find the names and give you their contact information. And that's something you, as an investigator, should be, they're easy to find. Their names are in the paper. When they come to our Board of Ed meetings, they're at a podium, they give their name and address. So it's not hard to find them. You know, they're, they're public figures, they're, or not public.
Not public figures. They're not public figures.
No, they're not public, but they, they said their name in public and they've said their address in public. And, and, and they're not hard to find. And, and like I said, if you just read the articles from the day, you can get their names.
And I, and I have done that, but I did not specifically reach out to them because my understanding was you all wanted it to be a completely voluntary process where people
So that wasn't my under It's still voluntary to talk to you. I understand that. We can't make them. But I didn't, and like I said, it's maybe just my impression of what we agreed on. But that wasn't my impression that, that you would sit by and wait for them to call you. That was one strategy. And then, and then you would actually get a little bit more, more active. And that's my, that's my comment. So
I've been in contact with your board chair. She's been aware of what I've, what I've been doing. And it was, she felt we needed, she also agreed with me that we needed to have this meeting in order to, for you to endorse a more aggressive approach.
So that's why we're here tonight to endorse a more aggressive approach, whether we misunderstood or misinterpreted. Now we know. Now we all know. This is all new to us. We've never done a private investigation before. Attorney Chinny has. I have worked with DCF students before and they're, you know, not always very forthright and comfortable with dealing with, with other people. And so believing that maybe perhaps these people would reach out to them would be more comfortable for them. But obviously that isn't happening and we need to be more aggressive and need different approaches. And, and this is why we're having this meeting. Obviously, we all agree that it should be a more aggressive approach. So that was, certainly now we can provide that direction. And then also hear from Attorney Chinny how, what that aggressive approach means. How will we do this? How, how, what does that mean, a more aggressive approach? Well, how will we get that information? Where does it go from there? What different methods could be used to reach that younger population? It was posted on the, on the forum. There was an article posted on the forum later, which people interested in the investigation commented on, but yet then did not reach out to Attorney Chinny. So then providing her with those names perhaps will help them be comfortable and know that they, they need to know that we're here because we want their information. We want their story. We want their side. Because we started this investigation because the OCA only listened to one side. We want to make sure that all sides are heard. We want their information and we want to know that we want them to be heard. And I think that maybe conveying that a little bit more will also help. I've heard that they're, they're not sure that they really want their side. We do want their side. We want their information because we want their fact. We want all facts to be put into this process or it's not an investigation. So Attorney Chinny, do you have ideas on how we're going to be more aggressive and what we're, what we can do to go forward to get this information?
Absolutely. Obviously, I can, anybody who's, the, the first, the easiest place to start is obviously with your board minutes because they're forced to give their address. So I have snail mail contact information right away. It's also, there are all kinds of, there are all kinds of investigative tools you can use to get people's new addresses, to get their email addresses, to get their phone numbers, all of that, all of that is very, very easy to do. And that's what I'll do. I'll look at the names that are in the day. I will look at the names that, that of the folks that came to speak with you. Hopefully, the person who called me yesterday, whose call I returned, will also call me back tomorrow. And I can get, she seems to have more information than just about her own child. I will reach out to all of those people. I will say, I will tell them that I want to hear their stories, that the board wants to hear what they have to say, that we want to know exactly what happened. And that I am more, and I will listen to them with an open mind and I will talk to anyone else they want me to talk to. And I will follow those leads wherever they may go. So if, if I speak to one person, she says, well, I have a friend, she really doesn't want to talk about it. I will reach out to that person and say, your friend says you don't want to talk about it. I would really, really like to hear from you. We can do this in as private a way as you like. The only thing, as I told you the first night, what I cannot do is promise confidentiality to, to, to people who speak. I can promise it to, I can promise that it won't be, that their names won't, again, appear in the press if they don't want them to. But I can't prom, if, if somebody is accusing some, if somebody ends up accusing, let's just take as an example, somebody accuses a member of your staff. I spoke to this person, I spoke to her three different times and she said nothing. She did nothing. She didn't tell anybody else. She didn't investigate. She didn't give me forms to fill out. She didn't give me your Title IX policy. She didn't help me fill out a complaint. I would then have to go back to that person and say, well, this person is making this accusation. What do you have to say for yourself? And when I talked to your administrators, I told them, this is likely to be just a very And when I talked to your administrators, I told them this is likely to be just a very preliminary interview because as allegations emerge. You're going to have to address the specific allegations as they, as they come to the fore and that's still going to be the case.
Why did you interview those staff and administrative members? What, what was your objective there if you didn't have anything to ask them about? Do you ask them if they were. Liked children, were good to children, didn't do anything wrong or?
I asked them, I asked them whether the allegations in the day were true. What's, what's, what we're being told is that there were many, many complaints and that you ignored all of them.
And, and I'm really surprised they said no.
Oh, I'm not surprised at all. Of course they said.
No, I was, I was being sarcastic. I'm sorry. Because why would they, why would they say, oh, you're right. We really made a terrible error. I guess that I wondered why you didn't try to get information from. Children first and then would go to them and say, look, this is what we're doing. Because I, I remember you saying that you were, were going to be cautious about this because. The way that people that are FBI or police. Go into a particular case, they assume that people are guilty. Well, I'm going to have to say that because of everything we heard, I do assume there is some guilt. In the way, there, there is something on the guilt in the way that students, students' learning has been compromised. That is a guilt that we as board, board members need to understand because there are a lot of people that are talking about it. And that is how they perceived it. Now, I don't know if you investigate perception, but I think you should.
Well, and I, no, and I think we will. The administrators did to a person express remorse that people, that students felt the way they did about it. What they denied was that there was this litany of complaints that they received that didn't go anywhere. But they did express concern that the students felt the way they felt regardless of what complaints did or didn't come forward.
I guess that I, that seems to be the greatest focus is finding whether or not. Complaints were made and they were not responded to. I think it's much huger than that, much more huge than, than that. I think that children were. Were intimidated, were fearful, were, were driven into just pure. Concern, not being able to reach out. It, it, they're, the fact that they didn't come forward with concerns is a, is even more huge concern. So how are you going to, to reach out to find out about all of this? This, this fear that was engendered, that was not allowed to, not, did not allow the students to come out and really talk about it.
Well, and that's what I need them to tell me. That's what I need them to tell me. Why is, what is it that made you feel, what is it that made you feel? Well, did you come forward? And if you didn't, what is it that made you feel that you couldn't? Did you hear stories that others had come forward and they had been retaliated against or they had been ignored or they had been belittled? Were you afraid that it was too embarrassing? Did you not want to be a person who got someone in trouble? Those are all the questions that you ask. If you did come forward, to whom did you come forward? If you didn't come forward, what was it that made you feel that you couldn't or that you shouldn't?
I, I don't know. I think that maybe we need to help you to come up with a, a bigger. Motivation for these young kids to want to come forward and not just to talk about, did you feel uncomfortable? Did you, or? A, a, a bigger goal of this is for your, for. For your, your future children that are in the high school. This is for your high school. This is for the reputation of your high school. Something with a greater objective than just, did you, we're, we're sorry that you felt uncomfortable about this. I, I think it. Demeans the intelligence of these, of these children and that's why they aren't coming forward. They've already had, a whole year has gone by where none of this has been addressed. Why should they suddenly? Trust that something, some other person coming in and asking them the same questions that have been asked before for the whole last year? We, we've waited a very, very long time to have this and I think that that has caused a disincentive. With many of the children coming forward and that is actually what some children said. They said, why should we do this now? Because we, we've been asked these questions before and nothing ever happened. So there seems to have to be a bigger incentive, a bigger motivation. For drawing these children out than just. We're going to ask you the same questions that we've asked you for the past year and probably nothing will happen, but.
Okay, Craig, did you want to say something? You unmuted.
Well, I'm just, I, I think this goes back to my earlier comments. I, Heidi, I feel like you're prejudging. You've already. Determined the outcome of the investigation. And that's what I, I don't think that's appropriate. I mean, let's talk about, if you have a list of people, turn it over to the attorney. If you have suggestions for certain things we can do to get people to come forward, let's come up with those, but to, to say that. It's, I don't think we can say we are missing something or we aren't missing something, yet we just don't know. That's why we're doing an investigation. And to, to prejudge it and say it's showing this or showing that, if we already know that, why do we need to do the investigation? I mean, it's frustrating. I under, and I understand you're frustrated too, but let's talk about how we can have steps. To get things done. And I actually, Attorney Chinny said something, I didn't put it in my comments initially, but I felt like we. She was working at our direction. So I agree with her. If we're unhappy with how it's gone, it's on us. So let's talk about how we want. To change. I don't necessarily agree, for example, I'm not sure Jack's suggestions are a little extreme for me, but at least he's had specific suggestions. About how he wanted to see things changed. So let's, let's come up with some specific suggestions. Otherwise, we'll be here all night talking about this and going nowhere. Let's, you know, if you have a list of people that you've gleaned from the day, turn it over. If you have any recommendations for how to use social media, let her, let her know. You know, again, I want us to go through this so that no one can say afterwards that we left any stone unturned. Now, having said that too, we have to realize. You know, there's a cost here too, so we're going to have to balance. And I said this initially, I said, you know, are we willing to spend a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars and people scoffed at me? But if you're talking about doing more investigation, really reaching out, being thorough. Bringing in another firm, whatever, it's going to cost more money and you have to like agree to that too. So again, I just want us to be proactive and say what we're going to do to get things done.
Well, I think, one second, Jack, I'll throw it back to you. I think right in this last twenty, twenty-five minutes, thirty minutes, we've already, everyone has kind of aired their. Frustration and I think we've come up with already a, a different approach, which will bring significant change. And the direct reaching out. I've also reached out to. Recent college students and high school students to say, okay, what would be the best way that you believe somebody your age would respond? Because I think that's where it kind of needs to come from. Would it be someone your age reaching out to you with that information? Would it be us? What works best and where do you get your information? It, it's been on the forum. It's been in the day in the Westerly Sun. I also know it was right when the pandemic hit. That's, that's overwhelming to absolutely everybody, no matter what age you are. So. Living in our new norm, we've gotten there. We know we're having Attorney Chinny reach out directly to easily all those names we have right at, at our fingertips. And then if anybody else has any names or information, just forward that along. I think that alone is an enormous step forward and we can always revisit in a week. At our next board meeting, what, this is what's happened this week. What else can we do to, to ramp this up just a little bit more?
Joe, to turn in any of his names? Is that a possibility?
They're in the paper. I guess that's where we would need to get those from.
And that's fine. I mean, I, I can certainly, that, that's something I can do as soon as this, we're finished with this call. And, and that's fine. What I would suggest, yeah, what I would suggest is that I, I undertake this. Effort to reach out specifically to everybody who was in the paper, everybody that spoke to you. And everybody that, names that they give me, because that's generally what will happen at that point. And I was, when. I will tell you several, I, I did speak with several children. And who all, all of whom were in the same category. Nothing happened to me, but I knew friends that had problems. And I said, please have your friends reach out to me. Please let them know. We've had a, we've had a very respectful. Conversation and I hope you'll tell them that that was the case and that, that I want to hear from them and that I will listen to, I will listen to everything that they have to say. And all of them promised to do that and none of them. Had any luck in getting anybody to talk to me. So I think at this, what I will be doing is reaching out to all of the names that were in the day, all of the names of the people who spoke. To you directly, all of the parents that spoke to you directly. And anybody they identify that who's, that they think I should talk to, I will also reach out to. And then I would, I would suggest that we meet again in two weeks' time to talk about how that has proceeded.
Attorney Chinny, I wonder when you. Call these people or could you give really a specific scenario of how you will approach them? Because they know that you were out there. Why are they telling you this information? I, I just wondered. What your strategy was to help them to, to, to speak out because they haven't done it yet.
What I said to them, Heidi, to all of these individuals was the, was that. If you believe that justice was not served here, if you believe that this was not handled appropriately, that you were not treated. Appropriately, that your learning environment was interfered with, that you were put in a situation where. Your, your schooling and your education was disrupted, the only way that can ever be addressed. Going forward is for that to all come to light and for everybody to know exactly what happened. What, not just what happened to you, but what happened to others, how this, how this environment that was so distressing to you came to pass. So that we can address that and stop it from happening in the future. And that's what I, and that's what I'll say to them directly when I speak to each one of them. I've made it very, very clear that I have no preconceived notions here, that I want to hear everything that anyone has to say. Even if it's hearsay, even if it's not, this happened to me, even if it's just that this happened to my friend. Or other friends, or I know someone, or it happened to my girlfriend, or it happened to my boyfriend. I made it very, very clear with the people that I spoke with, what I wanted to hear and that I was very, very open and willing to hear from anybody.
What is your approach with teachers?
My approach with teachers is to, is that. You all know what this is about, you're adults. You've seen, you've read the paper, you've read, you, you've heard what's happened at the board meetings. I just want to know what you, what you know and who you know and who can tell me. In no uncertain terms, what has happened here? Who can, who can tell me how they felt? Who can tell me why they felt the way they did? Who can tell me who they felt let them down? All of that. I have, I'll be honest with you, I haven't talked to many teachers yet. The only teachers I've talked to are teachers who. Who work directly with the two, the two complaints that we know about. That we, that we have documentation of. I haven't talked to every teacher in the school. And again, I'm not sure how fruitful that would really be. My father was a high school teacher and I've, look, I've been in schools for almost thirty years. Unfortunately, high school classrooms are unto themselves. So you could be working down the hall from someone who is a complete creep and a complete jerk and unless students came to you about him or her. You wouldn't be in a position to know about it, unfortunately.
Jack?
Yeah, so real quick, I, I guess. You know, I, I, I know someone that was impacted. It was one of my daughter's friends. I, this idea that as board members, we should be out tracking people down. It, it, that's not, that's not our role. I'm not going to call and I'm not going to, that's not what we should be doing. We're hiring somebody to do that. This person is probably, I think she's probably like twenty-two years old now. Probably does, isn't aware of what's going on. So my question for the attorney is how are you reaching out to someone like this who probably would tell you her story? But has no idea this investigation is going on.
How would she have no idea? Is she out of state?
Um, no, she's in state. She doesn't read the New London Day. She probably doesn't look at our board minute, minutes.
Is she on Facebook?
I have no idea.
It's all over Facebook, Jack. It's all over Facebook.
Facebook's not a big platform for kids anymore.
Yeah, the fact you even said Facebook is, none of my daughters are on Facebook.
My kids aren't on Facebook. That's an older person thing.
Yeah, this is why I'm frustrated with you.
There are a lot of younger people who are involved in this topic because I've seen their names posted on Facebook and posting these, this topic. So if it's important to them, they may know about it, but they may not be on the forum and they may not be on Facebook. So there would be another way. Which is also why I've reached out to people that age to say, what is the best way?
Yeah, but Alexa, that's not.
To make sure.
It's not. Can I just say?
Why not help? Why not?
I think it, it, it makes us look like we're not having a real investigation if we're out there helping our investigator because our investigator isn't doing her job. That's, 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 that's my perspective from the outside.
Jack, I think you've reached over the line there. That, that I don't think is a fair comment.
Okay.
Is this person on Instagram? Is this person on Snapchat? I've been on all of those. So.
But, but Alexa, I don't think that that was quite right to reprimand Jack because. If we could not, we cannot feel open about what our opinion is in this gathering. Then perhaps we should not have included the attorney. But, because I think it's really important for us to express what not only our feelings are, but what we have had a lot of constituents talking to us about. That's our job. So I think it's, I, I think it's really helpful for Jack, who has this kind of background and understands this. And has daughters so involved, should really be expressing as he had. So I, I don't, I don't think we should reprimand one another. With the strong feelings that we have towards this. It's been a very frustrating thing for all of us. And so if we still feel frustrated, that needs to be able to be expressed.
Thank you.
I agree as well. With that, we should be able to say what we feel openly in, in this meeting, not be reprimanded, belittled. Any of that. I've been, I've been on the other end of that and it's just not a good feeling. We need to be, it's a tough situation for everybody and we need to be supportive. Respectful and let everyone speak their own opinion.
We are all frustrated. It's a very difficult time and we all do need to be respectful of everybody in the meeting. And so how, so at this point, we are. What I've heard from everybody, they want more direction, which was one of the purposes of having this meeting, to give direction to Attorney Chinny. So she's reaching out to. All of those contacts, any names that we already have. So we have that direction. Do we? Have her give, provide us an update as she did before for our Thursday board meeting? And then the following week, we have another meeting such as this.
Do you have a meeting on the fourteenth?
We have a meeting on the fourteenth.
I would also suggest that any communications between Attorney Chinny and any member of the board are made available to the entire board.
Sure.
At the same time.
Yep, that's fine.
I agree with that. I, I think that we should continue to work as a total body. And understand that this is a, a, a to, a whole effort and.
Yep, we have been. Okay, so is that the direction at this time? To have her. Yep, go ahead, Jack, you're unmuted.
No, he's, oh, sorry.
Yes, that, that would be my direction.
I really struggle with this technology. Yeah, I listed, I won't, I won't run through it again. I listed four or five items that I thought. This came from the other investigator, the one I had wanted. You know, if, if those were implemented, I think it would go a long way toward, you know, so that's just my, my two cents.
Great. I, I think already we have, the email was one of them, Jack, on that. I, I think already we have, the email was one of them, Jack, on that list. She mentioned that, direct phone calls, that was on that list.
Uh, set up a, am I muted?
No.
Oh, sorry. I feel like I need one of my daughters in here to help me. I'm such a bumbler. Set up and run a confidential hotline was another one. In order to encourage victims and witnesses to come forward. I mean, that's, that shouldn't cost any money and it's a effective tool.
There is that direct phone line that's specifically for this purpose that she has and a direct email that's only for us. It's only for our investigation. So there is those two things. I don't know if that meets the same needs you're thinking.
Is that publicized?
Yeah, it is, but we can figure out a way to, we can get it out there again and more and everything else.
Okay, okay.
For now?
For now, good.
Sure.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. I will look forward to getting back with you after I have undertaken more aggressive steps.
So this, we're meeting again on the 14th to hear what Attorney Chinny has been able to gather or what is it that we're doing? Action plan is?
Sure. The 14th, May 14th is our regular Board of Education meeting. So at that time, she, Attorney Chinny will provide us with that update like she did the last time. So we'll have that and then that's the update that also is, we can provide directly to the public. And then the week after, we can have a meeting more like this. So it'll be more in depth. And I think from, from the update provided on Thursday, maybe that Friday morning, if people have some information or questions or suggestions, we shoot those over to Attorney Chinny before we wait for a whole week to go by. How does that sound? That's, so we get those updates and changes that need to be done more, more rapidly. Okay. Okay. Attorney Chinny, thank you so much for tonight. We've all aired our concerns and we'll keep that line of communication wide open. Are there any other board comments or concerns that we haven't already expressed on tonight's agenda item?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for everyone's expressed honest opinions and we will talk soon. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. I just found out if you just push the space button, it unmutes you.
We learn something new every day.
Actually, at the top of your picture, there should be a place to unmute yourself.
This is just really easy.
Yeah, I have my little mute click button right down here at the bottom. It works pretty good.
Oh, that's true. It's also at the bottom of the screen.
Depends on the screen and the platform, I suppose. All right. We'll have to get Jack a rocking chair when we get back to the board table, huh? All right, everybody, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, everybody. That's great, Jack, thank you.